Obviously, I just want to say how amazing this area is and how we love coming down here, morning and afternoon and evening, most days. Enjoy the peace, the quiet, the fact that it's so close to town, city. And it's been really excellent helping the Friends group getting in the paths and looking after the place. And the fact that Chris is leading the way forward into how that's done is brilliant. He's really taken on board the area, what the people want, the Friends group request. And he's really looking out for the vegetation, the plants, the wildflower, the birds. And it's just amazing, really, really good.
Just wanted to say a massive thank you. These green spaces have meant a lot. Such a wild and healthy and amazing, simply the only way to put it, place here in the centre of Truro. Also been lucky to have spent time at De Buzz up at Cusbeen as well. Again, looking at the fantastic work that's being done by Chris Waddell and his team, the Wildlife Ranger here in Truro. It's truly, truly inspiring to know that Truro has such a beautiful, natural, wild place that you can come and just observe nature as it's intended to be. Be part of the joy of life and just watch nature being itself around you. And this is purely really through a lot of the work that Chris and his team have done. It's absolutely fantastic. I'm proud to know the man and I'm proud to, in some ways, contribute small parts to this. It's just amazing and I just hope Chris continues doing this great work for many, many years to come and encourages and enhances the joy and the beauty that is Dubs and Cusbeen and the other wild wildlife sanctuaries here in the centre of Truro. So again, I just want to say thank you to Chris. It's a pleasure knowing you, it's a pleasure helping work alongside you. It's just, just great. And I think these areas probably wouldn't be as good as they are without all the hard work, dedication and love that you put in yourself. So that's from myself, John, from the group Wildflowers of Cornwall and also as a member of the Friends of Dubs More. Thanks.
This is my favourite walk. Thank you for keeping it pretty. And taking care of our woods and our park. Lots of love, Colin the Frenchie.
Hi Chris, it's Mr and Mrs Bramble here from Multivacs. We just want to say a really, really big thank you for looking after the wild wood and making it such an amazing place. Honestly, you inspire us every single day with all the amazing stuff that you do. So thank you so, so, so much from us both.
Shall I start?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, since the lockdown, I mean, I've always cycled a little bit, but since the lockdown, we've been sort of exploring places and looking around. So some places we've been years ago, but I haven't really been back since. And then other places we've been exploring, particularly Cusbeen. I hadn't really, I'd seen all the fantastic pictures on the Facebook. But then, you know, we went down there the other night and walked around. And since then, we've been over to New Mills, down to where the Ford is and all the way around.
Oh, yeah.
So those places, I mean, I've lived in Truro for years and years and never really taken a lot of interest in them. So having all this stuff on Facebook since Chris arrived and being able to see all that stuff and take an interest. And then really the fairy doors that were coming up. So I thought, I really got to get down there and see this.
Yeah.
You know, it's just made such a difference to the town. So I think Chris's involvement has been absolutely brilliant.
Amazing. And do you, do you know Chris? You know him to talk to, don't you? So you-
Oh, yeah, we've met, we've met a few times and I've been on some of the Friends groups, so.
Thank you. I know, yeah. So you're on the Friends groups on Facebook and-
Yeah, we, we, well, there was like a group that met up at Malabar at the centre. So I went to the first meetings of those. So I can't always go to the meetings unfortunately, but no, it's just made such a huge difference. Because it's made a lot of people think, well, we inherited a lot of that land like Cusbeen, we inherited from Cornwall Council.
Ah, okay.
And they'd really not, well, I say not-
Not touched it much.
Not touched it much. And then you go back now and see what's a huge difference it's made. It's just fantastic. And I think engaging people on the, on the Facebook page has been great and involving the kids. But also a huge range of people. So I mean, we see people with disabilities and people who might not have been involved, traditionally sort of getting involved in, in things, you know. And then Chris's own little videos about how to make an act. I'm not going to make an act. But no, I think all that stuff is really great. So, and it rings in really nicely as well because we've been, you might know, we've been doing the community development work in Truro for about 10 or 15 years.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, with the recent pandemic, this lockdown stuff, that has really come into its own. So we had all the established groups, but they were able to kick into action immediately to help people in their neighbourhoods.
Amazing.
You know, get shopping and fetch medical supplies.
So is that Damien and stuff as well, Damien?
Damien, yeah. But I think the stuff that Chris has been doing, getting the young people. I mean, I heard last night we had a Malabar meeting. A lot of the kids, not unsurprisingly, are getting, you know, bored frustrated with things to do. And so they can now go down on Cusbeen, you know, maybe take part in some of the activities and, and help to frame the way that the area they live in looks. So no, I just think he's been, you know, we've got fantastic staff in Troy City. I'm really proud of Troy City Council. But I think Chris has just been a fantastic, you know, addition to that and has brought a whole new set of skills and, and interests to people. So no, I'm really fantastically proud of the work that he and the rest of the guys do.
Brilliant, amazing.
Yeah, three years ago, when this woodland was owned by a developer, it was overgrown and it was neglected. And I was really concerned and lots of residents were really concerned that the city council should get the ownership of this land. And we fought for years to get this made a public space. And the bridge that we're standing on now is owned by the council. All of the woodland is owned by the council. And to me, like Chris working for the city council was, is almost like a dream come true in many ways because he sort of symbolises everything about how we want things to go forward. That he's got that passion, he's got that understanding, he's exceptionally hardworking. And he's got a genuine desire to sort of reach out to people, especially sort of more, maybe more hard to reach people and getting them involved. And I think that that is really, I can, I can kind of relate to that in many ways. And it's that enthusiasm that really helps and it really, as a council as well, as a local council in Truro, it just helps us do what we need to do, which is care for the community.
Yeah, that's amazing. I think he's, he loves working as part of the community. I think that although obviously nature's his passion, you get, you, he's not really inspirational until he kind of is with people.
Yeah, and he's quiet about it as well and sort of, yeah, there's a lot more to Chris than, than maybe you might realise when you first meet him. And I think Richard, actually, Richard Budge, credit to him for appointing Chris to the role of whoever it was, because they obviously saw something that was really good. And I'm just grateful that he's working for us and I don't want him to go, you know. I want him to stay in Truro forever.
Me too.
Truro is a really good place to work and it's a good, it's got lots of nature. And, you know, it's not just houses and shops. There's, there's rivers, there's fields, there's forests, there's woodlands, there's little streams like here. This is one of the oldest, see that little bridge down there?
Oh, yeah.
It's probably, it's probably been there for hundreds of years, I mean, maybe even a thousand years. And I mean, just think about all the people that might have crossed the stream on that, on that tree trunk. And I think Chris sort of gets it as well, really, that we've got a real history here. But we've also got like a way forward now. And what he's doing, you know, he's getting people down there, clearing up, clearing all the litter, maintaining the area. And it's just, he's putting a really nice personal touch to it all and it's, that, that really is good.
I think he might have posted something on the Facebook page and he, I sort of bumped into him the very next day and realised how committed he was to the area. Because we, my first house I've ever bought is right, you know, right here next to these woods. And we walked through, and I remember this bridge being put in and made. And we were so excited because it meant that we could actually walk around the woods and almost like arrow woods. And then the children came along over the last eight years. And they absolutely adore playing down here in these woods. And especially during lockdown. It's been, it's been a blessing, basically.
Do you, you have quite a bit of interaction with Chris, don't you, in the meetings and stuff?
I, yeah, well, meetings, Beechwood Pirate Residence Associations. Chris joins in on, the last meeting we had, we did via Zoom. And Chris was busy sniffing away at, in one of the other areas.
Cusbeen, Cusbeen, I think.
Oh, Cusbeen, right, yeah. And Cus, Cusbeen?
Cusbeen, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. And he was quite happy sniffing away. And, but it just showed his dedication, his, his commitment and dedication to what he does. For him, I think, the way I see it, for him, it's not just a job, it's part of his life. And he doesn't, he doesn't live, you know, he doesn't even live here. And I, I think it's amazing the way he works and his ideas for the, the areas and for other people to enjoy. And he, and also as a dad of a special needs child with autism, I believe that, is this right? Yeah. I believe that he has groups of young adults coming to help. And it's also part of their Duke of Edinburgh's ward as well. And I think that's really special. And as a dad of an autistic boy, I think that's, that's really, and I know how much my son Josh likes to get involved in those sort of things. And I think that's amazing that, that groups help Chris and his team to improve areas for others to enjoy. Like my other two children, who absolutely adore this place.
As you can see.
I was lucky enough to grow up in a modern house on a newly built council estate with freely accessible open spaces very close by. Some of my earliest memories are of playing in Oakwood with my brother or my school friends, which was near enough for us to be allowed to walk there without any accompanying adults. There were paths winding about and a stream that led into a swamp. And in the spring, it was carpeted with bluebells, so as kids called it Bluebell Wood. We played wonderful games using any bits of builders debris that we could find, usually returning home covered in mud. I still remember the special telling off that I got when I stepped off the plank while being explorers in the swamp. My white socks acquired a permanent yellow cast from the oka in the mud. When I moved to Cornwall and into my house in Tinney Drive, I had no idea that something so similar lay hidden behind the fence of the access road. In the planning application for Beechwood Park, Wayne Holmes promised that all sorts of wildlife habitats and recreational areas would be created, but actually did as little work as possible, leaving much of the woodland totally inaccessible and then allowed the paths to deteriorate for lack of maintenance. I was delighted when, after the land transfer, Chris started to reclaim the resultant wilderness of Brambles and Scrub. And even more so when he showed us his plans to create access to the stream and improve the habitats for a range of wildlife. I very much hope that Wayne Holmes and Redro will fulfil their intentions and give the remaining sections of the valley to the city council so that with direction from Chris and input from our residents, we can create a Glastinian Valley Trail for all of east Truro to enjoy. These undeveloped areas are still so rich in wildlife and will enable today's and future generations of children to have adventures close to home, just like I was able to do all those years ago.
Okay, well, I was actually on the interview panel for Chris. And when I read his application in his CV, I couldn't believe it because it was like that everything I'd always sort of wanted to do on the council and on parks. And when we actually met him, I think we were all of one mind that he was who we wanted. I mean, the other candidates were good, but it was something about his enthusiasm and his experience with working with the community and with marginal groups, in a way of that, a way of putting it, and including people that actually made us realise that he was what we needed. And I think that has been, I think his, his, his passion for nature and his ability to get people involved, who normally would be not even considered to, to do some work in nature or gardening, it would be like, no, you know, they, they wouldn't want to do that. And in fact, they do and it's, it's really good to include so many people. And I'm also, it's the idea of actually not only urban wildlife, but urban food production that I think is, I think it's the future. We're going to have to change how we do things and that's an excellent way of doing it, I think. And there's also the wellbeing aspect because it does increase wellbeing. It all kind of fits in nicely. So you help nature, you help human health and mental and emotional wellbeing. And it's just a big package, really. So, so, yeah, I don't quite-
So Truro's a very old place. And amongst other things, as well as being a port and a mercantile town and a town centre and a religious centre, it's also a farming town. And therefore it's set in the middle of landscapes and it's set in the middle of nature. And I think that since we managed to persuade Cornwall Council to give us Cusbeen Woods and since we've striven since 1977, when we got it, to develop Dobbers Moor as a nature reserve and all the other pieces of ground that we've got around the town, that one of Truro City Council's missions has been to blend nature back into the heart of the town. And I think that it's a really good thing to have somebody working for us in this new 39 acres of woodland, who's clearing it, opening it up, telling its tales, bringing its tales to the surface and so on, nurturing it. I think it's a fantastic thing that we've got somebody for whom this isn't just a job, but it's a vocation and such an engaging character to do it. I sincerely hope that Truro City Council can live up to its expectations.
We just wanted to say we really liked the wooden path and all the benches that sit next to Walker and Lockwater. And we love taking our cats and our dog all the way and all that. And we think it's really nice because the animals like it too. Because I was putting his hands, because he really liked running around here. And we've seen deer three times. Thank you, thank you.
Really, I was actually really amazed when I found out that Truro City Council had employed a ranger, I think, I think. And I thought, what? To look after our wild bits? And I thought, that's amazing. That's like, I didn't believe that Truro was, would warrant having a ranger. Because I work with the Wildlife Trust and, and I know they have rangers and all that sort of thing. And so seeing that it was valued and that it was valued enough to employ somebody, I just thought it was amazing. And then Chris came along to, I think it was a Friends of Dobbers Moor meeting, I think is probably where I met him. And he was, you know, just a bit, obviously, I think he was probably a bit quiet, but obviously enthusiastic. And eventually brought Javier to take that over, didn't he? Which has not been an easy task, but at least we're not doing it at the moment. But there are people who disagree with the idea of wild things. And there are people like myself and Lindsay and a lot of other people who just love what we're doing, that's increasing areas for wildflowers. But I was very impressed that Chris talked to a woman that Lindsay and I couldn't talk to because she didn't like bees, I think. And what we're seeing today here, actually on the clover, is a lot of bees, which is pretty jolly good. And there are butterflies here in John Tandleland, there's orange, sorry, orange tits, which I think have probably faded out now they've finished their season. And common blues, I saw three or four the other day, common blues. And there are various whites and other butterflies that never stop, so I can't ID them. But I saw a ladybird today. But along with wild stuff, there are sort of herbs and strawberries, I think I had my eye on. And things that you can just like come along and pick and eat if you feel like it would be quite cool. And it's a mixture that's nice. When it's beginning to, I think it's beginning to look really good. And, and in my mind, it looks well cared for. In some people's minds, it is what you're doing, why it's such a mess, anyway. I love it, I love the fact that Chris is enthusiastic and passionate. And I think he seems very knowledgeable, well, I say he is very knowledgeable, but you know, he just, he's just has ideas. And I come along and I'll help. I think it's absolutely amazing. Chris and I joined the council at a similar time, working. So we've been on a journey together, which has been great. I think the area, from seeing it at the very beginning to just a few weeks ago, is wonderful. I've absolutely fallen in love with the little fairy pixie dolls. And it's encompassing people of all ages, all abilities. I think Chris, the work that you've done with the-
I think, Chris, the work that you've done with the young people with autism, the work with potentially the students from Falmouth Uni and the medic students, it's amazing. And keep going because there's just so much more we can, we can do and so much more people that need to be aware of the open green spaces that are available in Turoe.
Afternoon Louise, how are you today?
Thank you.
Awesome. So today Louise, we are going to make a little video. Um, and it's going to be about your friend and our friend at Mohe, Chris, and some of the work that you've been doing with him down in the woods. So, do you want to tell us a little bit about the work that you've been doing down in the woods with Chris and Dom?
We've been cleaning woods, making bird tables, making pathways, pathways, cleaning up rubbish.
Awesome. And have we been using those pathways and woodlands since? And what have we been doing?
Looking for houses and then.
Looking for the fairy houses, brilliant. Um, and so do you enjoy your work with Chris? So what kind of boss is Chris?
Very good boss.
Is he? What makes him a good boss?
Makes me laugh.
He makes you laugh?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else about him?
No.
No?
No, he's a very good guy.
He's a good guy. And has he, he teaches a lot, us a lot about the woods, doesn't he? So what has he taught us about the woods? What kind of animals can we see there? Bats?
Foxes.
Foxes?
Budgers.
Uh huh.
Squirrels.
And squirrels, brilliant. So we haven't seen Chris properly for a while, have we? Are we desperate to get back to him?
Yeah, we are, yeah.
Okay, so anything you would like to say to Chris?
Thank you, Chris.
See you soon.
Hello Ranger Chris, just wanted to say, um, a big hello and thank you um, for everything that you've been doing lately, um, probably over the past year. Lots of stuff going on behind the scenes, I'm sure, with the community engagement with Cusbeam and the local area. Um, I joined the group about a year ago. I've really been enjoying sort of getting involved in the community meetings and looking at how we can develop um, more spaces for people to enjoy outside, so that we can all get outside and enjoy it a little bit more. Obviously when the weather's a bit nicer, but also um, the fact that you've still been really engaged with everybody, um, and in contact with everybody during lockdown. Um, and really, really sort of making the local area, um, accessible for people, uh, which is a really big thing. So thumbs up to you, keep up the good work. And I look forward to seeing you at some point soon at one of the community groups. Cheers.
He did. Um, so even with the uprights and all the iron rails, it gives a good indication that this is now new and it's opened up.
Yeah.
So it's an extension. So what Chris has actually done, I find what Chris has done, um, he's a breath of fresh air. So what he's done is, he's, he's actually joined up all the dots. And he's put people together. And he's put the community groups together. And he's got the volunteers and they got the interest in the enthusiasm. So really, basically, Chris is a breath of, breath of fresh air, you know? And what we do, finally, with this now, with the ferry doors, it was just a way and means of sort of opening people up to the areas so they could appreciate what we've got. And if they needed help in, in any project, say another group, Chris was actually over there doing it.
Oh, I know.
I can't understand really where you get all this energy from, do you know? Or not. It's just peace and quiet and appreciate it.
Yeah.
And that's what this is. The peace and quiet is here. The bird song, opened up the woods. I mean, it's unbelievable what we've met the birds coming here, long-tailed tits. Kids, always good for kids. Outside spaces, good for kids. Um, I think really, as I said to you before, what Chris has done, opened up and joined up people on the dots, brilliant, that's what we need. But sometimes I think, you know, will we keep him? That's the thing. Will we keep him? Will, will somebody else see all this? So he's good at motivating, bringing, bringing people together, getting their interests all, all, uh, all, all wired up. Yeah, I, I quite like it. I love, I love all the kids putting. You've got the volunteers. We do volunteer, we all do things, but would people do it for another bloke?
Audio.
For all the help Truro College and the young people and the staff.
Why did you enjoy it so much?
Because we were, we, because we were out in every, all weathers we were. And we did it in the rain, the hailstone, the cold, wet days.
So who made it enjoyable?
It was you Charlotte.
And?
Chris.
So he, he was the main factor, wasn't he?
Yeah, and Dom as well.
I don't think I made it enjoyable. I just drove you there.
Yeah.
So with Chris and Dom helping him, he was your inspiration, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Get you on TV.
And the yellows, because we had Chloe, didn't we?
So whatever the weather.
Yeah. Yeah, big thanks to Chris.
And on behalf of all the bronze steering teams as well.
And the gold as well.
We went out in all the weathers.
Yeah.
And has he inspired you to come and work for me now?
Hmm, yes.
So you want to tell me about what you've been up to here?
Yeah. Well, we've been, um, I've been picking up sticks, I have. And yeah, we, what else have we done?
Well, are you helping to make the outdoor place look lovely?
Yes.
Ready for other young people to come in and enjoy the woodland?
Yep.
Wonderful. So the big thing is to say thank you to?
Chris.
Hello Chris, hi. Hope you're doing good? Yeah, I am. And we just wanted to, yeah, just wanted to thank you for, for all, for all the help you've been giving us throughout this past year. I mean, you've been, you've been a huge help, you have, huge help. That being said, let's take a look at the outdoor place.
And, and obviously joint effort. And then the boardwalk going across I did in a day with Jay and Craig. And then obviously all the brash piles and Charlotte, Duke of Edinburgh student, spent days cutting away at that hedge row with snips. Bless them. And it's coming through now.